May the 4th, 2021. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number three is our election, and I'm going to ask our City Secretary to come forward and explain why we are going to postpone Agenda Item 3A and move on to 3B.
Good evening. Jan Vincent, your City Secretary. So, Item 3A was to be the canvas of the election held on May the 1st. Because we have one military ballot that is still outstanding, that military ballot deadline to be received is the sixth day after the election, which is Friday at 5:00 PM. The canvassing report cannot be completed until all ballots are in or the deadline has passed. So, we don't have a report from the county. Therefore, we cannot complete the canvas for the Northeast Ward and Northwest Ward City Council members. By law, the last date of canvass is May the 14th. And so, what I would like is to pull that agenda item, and then we'll call a special meeting for next week. I'm thinking May the 11th, which is Tuesday. I'll get that agenda out and get it posted before Friday. Once the canvas is complete on that date, then we'll administer the oath of office and the statement of officer, and those two seats can take office. The next agenda item is 3B, which is to administer the statement of officer, the oath of office, and the certificate of election to Jimmy Mize. Now, Jimmy is able to be... We are able to administer the oath of office to Jimmy Mize because he was unopposed. And the City Council declared him elected by ordinance at the March the 2nd City Council meeting. So, Jimmy, if you'll join me. We're going to first do the oath of office, so if you will, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, James D. Jimmy Mize.
I, James D. Jimmy Mize.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
All right. If you will sign that right there. This is the statement of officer, and if you will just repeat after me. I, James D. Jimmy Mize.
I, James D. Jimmy Mize.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have not directly or indirectly.
That I have not directly or indirectly.
Paid.
Paid.
Offered.
Offered.
Promised to pay.
Promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Or promised to contribute.
Or promised to contribute.
Any money or things of value.
Any money or things of value.
Or promised any public office.
Or promised any public office.
Or employment for the giving.
Or employment for the giving.
Or withholding.
Or withholding.
Of a vote at the election.
Of a vote at the election.
At which I was elected.
At which I was elected.
As a reward to secure.
As a reward to secure.
My appointment or confirmation.
My appointment or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Right there. Thank you. And the last is yours. And it just says, "The state of Texas, this is to certify that the general election held on May the 1st, James D. Jimmy Mize was duly elected as mayor of the city of Nacogdoches." Congratulations.
Thank you. I have known the former mayor most of my life, and I was honored to help her with her campaign. Uh-oh. And anyway, she asked, she at that time encouraged me to consider this job, and I appreciate you. Whereas Shelley Brophy continues to live in Nacogdoches for close to 54 years, graduating from Nacogdoches High School and obtaining both undergraduate and graduate degrees from Stephen F. Austin State University. And whereas she has had a career as a chef and a restaurateur and spent countless hours over the years volunteering with her children's schools, fundraising Stephen F. Austin State University School of Music, the Nacogdoches Chamber of Commerce, Hospice of East Texas, the Deep East Texas Council of Governments, the Texas Municipal League, and facilitating community grief support groups. And whereas Shelley Brophy has faithfully and honorably served the citizens of Nacogdoches, Texas for 12 years, four terms as council representative for the Northeast Ward and two terms as mayor. And whereas the citizens are grateful for her willingness to serve in attending well over 300 regular and special city council meetings, making an impact with decisions for the future of Nacogdoches about interviewing citizens for ward service, budgets and taxes, project service, parks and trails, water, economic development, ordinance changes, leading city council in hiring a new city manager and city attorney, and supporting emergency responses to the COVID-19 pandemic and recent severe winter storms. And whereas upon becoming mayor and valuing citizen input, encouraged citizens to speak on any agenda item at council meetings, is leaving the city financially healthy and will be remembered for her skills of collaboration, cooperation, respectfulness, civility, and making good decisions for the future of Nacogdoches. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Jimmy Mize, mayor of the city of Nacogdoches, and on behalf of the city council, hereby extend our heartfelt appreciation to Shelley Brophy. And also a plaque presenting Shelley Brophy for outstanding service to the citizens of Nacogdoches, Texas, council member Northeast Ward 2009 to 2017, and mayor 2017 to 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't really have much to say. I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity. Oh, yes. Something for me to do. No, I'm not going to say a whole lot. I just wanted to thank... Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve the city. It was a surprise. When... That's not something I grew up thinking, "Oh, I want to be a mayor one day." It just sort of... It sort of happened, and you allowed it to happen. And a lot of great things happened for our city. This council is amazing, and I tell you what, the city staff, if I could, if every company could work like this city does, we would be in such good shape. So, bless you all, and I'm so thrilled for you. This makes it easy. Makes it really easy. The next item on the agenda is recognitions for Public Service Recognition Week.
So, this proclamation is for Public Service Recognition Week, and we've certainly got a great staff, as the mayor mentioned. Whereas celebrated annually during the first week of May since 1985, Public Service Recognition Week is time to set aside to honor the men and women who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees. And whereas many public service serve in areas such as health education, public safety, the arts, the environment, finance, public infrastructure, community planning, human rights, recreation, and more, risking their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas day in and day out, the public employees provide the diverse services demanded by the people of our nation with efficiency and integrity, even putting their own lives at risk in order to continue serving the public throughout the pandemic and natural disasters. And whereas the public employees of the city of Nacogdoches are committed to exhibiting the high standards of professional excellence, creativity, skill, and customer service. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Jimmy Mize, mayor of the city of Nacogdoches, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize May 2nd through May 8th, 2021 as Public Service Recognition Week. Thanks to all of you. Okay, I'm new to this. We'll move on to number five, and that is our open forum. And we do have someone to speak tonight. That is Nancy Niehaus. If you would come forward to the podium.
Thank you all, and I'm very, very honored to be here with the new mayor.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I'll be the first public citizen to congratulate you. I'm here to announce that we're having a town hall meeting at Festival Park, and it will be on Thursday from 6:30 to 8:00. We are asking that you bring lawn chairs. Keith Kiplinger and Mario and a couple of community members will be on a panel, and we'll be discussing emergency preparedness for the future. And we are expecting a pretty large crowd, so we hope you all can come. And I'll just give you a flyer.
Great. We thank you. Thank you for doing that. We appreciate you. Okay, so we'll move on to item number six. Items being removed from the consent agenda. Are there any of those?
Motion to remove the consent of items.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Number eight, regular agenda, receive report and consider acceptance of the 2019-2020 annual audit. Clayton Rogers, CPA, Patillo, Brown, and Hill, LLP.
You've got me right now. Mayor, Council, Pam Carbo, Director of Finance. John Manning, the audit partner in charge of our audit, is actually going to present tonight instead of Clayton, so you get the boss man. I just wanted to kind of introduce him to y'all. This is the seventh annual audit that they have completed for us. We've been extremely happy with the services that Patillo, Brown, and Hill have provided, and I think you'll find that they have some good news for you on the financial side tonight. So, at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. John Manning. Thank you.
Thank you all for letting me be here. I just wanted to make sure that y'all can hear me.
I think so. I think we're good.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, congratulations, mayor. That was exciting. That we're on the same agenda as welcoming the incoming mayor, and I believe Pam made a correct statement earlier in saying that the audit was good news. And I would like to go over some of the high points there. I know you guys are busy. And just to kind of give you a little bit of background, we have already met with city manager and Pam and went over this when it was in a draft form, you know, in a couple of hour meeting. So, we've really drilled down, and everybody's taken a good look at this, and I believe we're able to present an extremely good comprehensive annual financial report for the city. If you want to start, the comprehensive annual financial report really broke up into three sections, your introductory section, your financial section, and the statistical section. That's just kind of the way they organize it, where the introductory section just gives people an overview of what to expect. The financials, obviously, are the financial picture of the city as of 9/30/2020. And then the statistical section is required also to have a comprehensive annual financial report that shows tenure trend information on a lot of information and bases for the city, such as tax base, principal employers. And when we talked about this at the meeting, if you guys get a chance to go back there and look, it's a good place to see how much the city has grown over 10 years because you can see things back from 2011 versus what they looked like in 2020, and you can see how much things have changed. So, I would just point out that that information is available, and that city staff and the auditor spend a lot of time making sure that those numbers are in there and that they're meaningful. If you look at page one of your bound report, this and the two reports I'm going to go over in a little bit are really the reason why we were here. This is the independent audit report, and what it states is that the numbers behind this report accurately state the financial position of the city of Nacogdoches as of September 30th, 2020. It's an unmodified opinion, which of the four types of opinions that we can offer is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. I think we discussed this at the audit committee meeting. It's called unmodified because we did not have to modify the opinion for things that were omitted from the city's financial statements or from the city's note disclosure. So, in other words, what this is saying is that the information is fairly presented, it's materially correct, and you have everything. So, I know that y'all are, from time to time, issue long-term debt. I know that y'all get grants, and in particular, right now with the coronavirus funds that are just coming in abundance, this is one thing that people will direct their attention to. And although it's only a three-page report, bond rating agencies look at it. A lot of people look at it, and having an unmodified opinion is a very good, a very difficult thing to do in the sense that it requires everybody in the city to work together. So, this isn't just a finance department report. This is a city manager report. This is water department report. This is police report. So, all those different departments had a hand in getting this very good report. So, I want to applaud all the city departments for their efforts there to get this. Starting on page four is your management's discussion and analysis. This is a required part of the report. It's written by management. We go through and make sure that we help provide the numbers from the report. But Pam and her staff go through here, and they discuss all the different changes that happened throughout the year in a narrative form. So, for those of us that aren't as familiar with looking at things numerically, when you look at them narratively, it kind of goes through and talks about some of the differences that happened during the year. And really, one of the things that I find meaningful here is if you look at page six of your MVNA, you can see there where it's the only place in the report anymore that has comparative data. So, you can look at your governmental activities. You have year 20 versus 19. And just to kind of go through here and look at some of the big changes, you know, one of the things that we'll go over in a minute is that the city actually had a very good fiscal year as far as revenues over expenditures. And one of the things that you can point out here is in the middle of page six, if you look at your long-term liabilities, they dropped from 22.9% down to 15.9%, which is about $7 million. And that had to do with a decrease in your unfunded pension liability and your regularly required bond payments on the very few outstanding bonds that the city has currently. So, you can kind of go through here and look and see the different things that happened throughout the year and look at them comparatively. They also have a lot of good charts. They kind of show you expenses versus revenues, revenues by source, and just kind of give you an idea of where the city's money is coming from, how that money is being spent. And all in all, a really good, useful document to look at if you're not an auditor where you look at financial statements all day. So, page 12 is the actual startup financial statements. This is your statement of net position. I'm just going to hit some of the highlights here. The one thing that I'd like to point out is there's two columns here. One is your governmental activities, which is everything except water, sewer, and airport. So, that's your debt service fund. That's all your grants. That's your general fund. And between those two, your business-type activities are your water, sewer, and airport operation, all combined into one total. The one thing that I'd like to focus on in particular is down here at the bottom, your net position. What that is, is theoretically, if you liquidated all of your assets and paid all of your liabilities, what would be left? And you guys are positive in every single category, which means there are resources available to accommodate what those different net position selections are for. So, we have some cities where they're really upside down in their pension, or they have a lot of outstanding debt that's for projects that aren't theirs. And you'll see that unrestricted number down there at the very bottom of page 12 being negative, whereas you guys are positive. And then also, if you'll remember, because of the relationship between the city of Nacogdoches and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we have to include them over here as what we call a component unit, which means they're legally separate from the city, but they're related enough to where they need to be included in the financial statements, and those have been there for the last several years. Page 14, like I mentioned earlier, is the income statement for your governmental and business-type activities, and both of those had more revenues than expenditures and to the tune of 5.7 billion in government and 5.2 in business type. So, an extremely good financial year for the city in both of those areas. If you look at page 15, this is your balance sheet. The only fund that you have that meets the criteria to be presented as major is the general fund. That's listed there as the first column. All of your other funds, debt service, grants, tourism, all that stuff is compiled into that other governmental funds there. And one thing that I'd like to point out is, we talked about audit risk, and if you look there at your balance sheet, your total assets came in at about 23.6 million. Well, 16 of it was cash and cash equivalents, which we're able to confirm with third parties 100%. So, there's very, very little audit risk with that number right there. Since you're due from other governments, that is the lag in your sales taxes. Those are paid on two months' end arrears. And also some grant receivables that you have, again, able to confirm those with outside parties. Your property tax is receivable. We were able to confirm with the county that collects the taxes. And again, if you look at your liabilities, very little risk. You have accounts payable, which is your services that were provided before the end of the fiscal year, but not paid until after. And then your biggest liability is accrued expenditures, which is your salary accrual for days that were worked before 9/30, but the payroll didn't come in until after. So, again, from a balance sheet standpoint, everything looks to be in very good working order. There's nothing here that sends up any red flags, like when your fund balance is trending in the wrong direction, or we see a lot of liabilities that are, you know, getting bigger each year without getting reduced. We don't see any of that here. So, if you look at page 17, this is your income statement for your general fund. And, you know, a year ago at this time, I wouldn't have thought that an income statement for a lot of governments throughout the state could look like this. You know, when this thing first started, we were thinking about how is sales tax going to get generated? You know, are people going to be able to pay their property taxes? And so, I know through a lot of difficult work and a lot of conservative decisions, the city was able to add to fund balance at the end of the year to the tune of about 1.6 billion. And that is getting your fund balance at 14.6%, which is pretty much right in a sweet spot as far as what industry standards get recommended. The minimum they want is three and a half months, and you guys are above that. But we don't feel you're getting to the point where you have, you know, so much that it starts looking strange that there is this much fund balance there. And sometimes people build it up to cash flow-specific projects and things like that. So, I want to applaud the city on really working on that fund balance number and getting it to where it needs to be because, as you can see, we have things like these pandemics or the freeze week, places that have some reserve weather those things better than people that don't. Starting on page 19 are your enterprise fund operations, which is your water, sewer, sanitation, and airport operations, which I mentioned earlier. Again, all of the net positions are in positive positions there, and all of those items or all those funds were able to add to net position, which again shows a lot of stability and looks very good from a financial standpoint. The other part that I would like to show you is starting on page 55, and I know y'all are probably already in it and will be in it very deep. Coming up is your budget, and this is a budget-to-actual statement for your general fund. And again, I'm sure part of this had to do with being extremely conservative in regards to the city operating during the pandemic. But you can see there that the city was very close on revenues and budgeted conservatively in the sense that they collected more than what they budgeted. And conversely, on the expenditures, they did the exact opposite. They stayed well under. And I think there were some projects and some things that were in the works, but in light of what happened starting last March, I think some of those things were held off to make sure that the city was in a good position there. So, I think those two factors are one of the reasons why you were able to add money to ending fund balance there. The other schedules that are in here are for funds that won't meet the major criteria. We combine those in the back, as I mentioned earlier. There's also some more detailed information that we could talk about for a week if you wanted to on your pension and your post-retirement benefit plans. But the gist of those numbers, we've already kind of discussed in the financials. But because this city spends over $750,000 of federal funds, we have to do our audit under what's called a single audit, meaning we have to look at your federal programs and test them for compliance with uniform grant guidance. And that's back here towards the back. Page 122 is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And obviously, this year it looks a little different because of the coronavirus relief fund, where you guys received money through TIDAM and submitted reimbursement requests for mainly first responders and law enforcement payrolls to help reimburse for some of the things that were going on that were escrow and just regular ongoing operations due to pandemic. And that got over $1.8 billion of expenditures there. So, that was clearly the only fund or the only grant that was major, and we tested that. And the finance department and all the departments had submitted all of their things on time, and we were able to feel real comfortable with the number that they turned over and that those expenses that they were applying for reimbursement for were proper and in line with the grant. And so, back here for our federal programs on page 120, we did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report. We did have one finding. That was a recurring finding from 19, that if you look at the management's response, by the time fiscal year 2021 comes around, that finding will be able to have a status of resolved or completed. And, you know, we applaud city staff for looking at that and figuring out a way to try to increase internal controls over really your largest expense, which is payroll. And so, I think that by bringing this HR under financial duties is going to really help with that control and be able to get that finding resolved. So, the other thing is, is the city submits their... voluntarily submits their financial report to the GFOA for three outside graders to look at the report to see if it meets all their criteria for reporting. We feel in looking at it that it should meet the criteria to get that award again. There were a few instances of some corrections that had to be made from last year, but they were extremely minor. And between the finance department and our firm, we were able to make sure that all of those items got corrected. I believe there were two or three, and they were, you know, stuff like wording or little minor items that were encountered. So, again, we feel that this will get the GFOA award. And, you know, we really appreciate the city taking financial reporting seriously and doing all the extra work it takes to do a comprehensive annual financial report. So, I think a lot of people at the end of these always ask, "If there was a grade, what would you give it?" what would you give it? And, and, and I would give this an A. I mean, um, we have to do very little with the information once we get it from the finance department. Um, there's always some end of year accrues that we need to make to get things right up to 9/30. But again, you know, e- extremely good information from them. Everybody's extremely helpful. All of our fraud interviews did not yield any, any inkling of anybody thinking that something was going on or felt like they thought something strange was happening that they wanted to, to relay to us. All those came back extremely clean. And, uh, you know, again, we really appreciate being of service to the city. We appreciate being your auditors and we really enjoy working with the city. And, and with that, I'll stick around and, and answer any questions that, that you guys may have. And I realize it's a very long document, so if you look at it later and something triggers a question, we're always available to help. We're here around.
Great report. We, we certainly appreciate your work. Ms. Fisher, any questions?
Yes, Mayor Mize. Um, thank you for, um, for, for putting that in terms that I could understand. I really appreciate it. Um, I know you just said you give, you give the, your grade is an A. Is there anything negative or anything that we can work on or do better on that you saw?
Uh, not get so much grant money for a pandemic. But, uh, I had that, I'm being, trying to be funny, but no. Auditor humor never comes off very well.
You did okay. It was okay.
No, I mean, this year, we, we were running a little bit behind because of the third party. We were, you have to send all of your census information for your retirement, uh, plan to an actuarial firm and it takes them a long time to disseminate all that information and build their projection of what your OPEB liability needs to be. That took those guys a little bit longer. Um, and so that's what kind of the delay was. But we really feel next year we'll be back to presenting this at the March meeting and everything should be back to normal. That, that was the only thing, and that's not bad. That's why they give things like extensions and that's why, um, even the nine-month, uh, deadline for federal single audits was expanded to a year, just because they know that everything is taking a lot longer right now and hopefully we're really close to getting back to normal. But no, I mean, we're getting our information timely. Everybody was extremely helpful. I, I can't think of one thing that we would really need to change. Counselperson.
That's great. Thank you.
Mr. Bolden?
Thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate it. Great report and a lot of numbers, but, uh, thank you for further explaining and highlighting the major items. But I, I just have one question. On the, uh, drop in liability versus lost revenue, was that basically because of the coronavirus relief funds and CARES Act?
Now, are you talking about the decrease in the pension that I mentioned earlier?
Right, right.
Now, actually, uh, let me show you, counselperson, there is a schedule on page 57 of the paper report. It kind of walks you through each year of that liability. And really, one thing that's always confusing with these pensions is that we're always operating almost two years behind. So this pension number that's included in your financial statements is being measured as of December 31st, 2019. So we're all the way back there with that number. And really, if you look at this chart on page 58, if you go down about to the middle of the page, you will see 2019, which is on the far right, you'll see a $13 million number. That, that essentially is the performance of the assets that are being held at TMRS for the funds that apply to the City of Nacogdoches. So you can see that was a $13 million increase to your assets, whereas the year before, the market didn't do so well and you actually had a $2.6 million loss. So you're looking there at a $15 million difference between two years because of the performance of assets being held at TMRS. When you go through here and look, if you look at all the years with the large swings, it all has to do with your asset performance there because this year we had a $13.3 million increase, the year before it was a $2.6 million decrease, the year before that it was a $10.8 million increase. But you can see every year where that number changes a lot, you can see that liability going up or down. So this, this particular thing was measured even before COVID became a thing. So it, it really doesn't have anything to do with the coronavirus or the, or the CARES Act. This strictly has to do with how well the market did in F, or in calendar year 19. I hope.
Okay, all right. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Um, I would like to sort of parrot, uh, both Mr. Bolden and Ms. Fisher in saying, um, thank you, um, for such a thorough report and for, uh, putting it in understandable terms, um, and also for, uh, for being available to answer questions down the road. Um, it, it will take me a little time to digest all of this, but, uh, I may have questions for, uh, for your firm down the road. And I'd also like to say thank you to Ms. Carbo for, for, uh, obviously a, a pretty spectacular job of keeping everything in order for us and, and Mario as well for keeping all of our, uh, costs in line. So that's all I have.
More credit started to Ms. Carbo, I would, I would think. Okay, so, uh, do we have a, a motion to approve the audit?
I'll move that we approve the audit.
Okay.
I'll second.
In a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Uh, those opposed, same sign? All right. Thank you. We do.
Thank you, counsel. And like I said, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Thank, thank you again. We appreciate your work.
Thank y'all.
We do have a need for executive session, I believe. And so at this time, we will, uh, we'll go into executive session. Item 10, open for action, if any, on executive session items. And I don't believe there is any action to be taken. So with that, move to number 11 and do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right.